Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Perth East Council. This 17th day of September, I'd like to call our meeting to order. If everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. I need a motion to confirm the agenda. The motion reads that the agenda as prepared for September 17, 2024, Meeting of Council of the Township of Perth East be approved as received. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. Okay, if you have curinary interests, you can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. We have eight items. Sorry, sorry. Okay. Clerk. Okay. Under consent items, we have eight items. Is there anything? Anyone has questions on or they'd like pulled? No? Okay, so then we have a motion that items 5.1.1 to 5.1.8, as set out in a consent agenda for the 17th of September, regular meeting of council be received for information and that the minutes of September 4, 2024, regular council meeting be adopted. Moved by Jerry, second by Bob. All in favor? Carried. Okay, under presentations, we have one other presentation and we have Chris Dietrich joining us tonight and Chris is going to be on the screen. So before we do that, I'm going to read this little paragraph. "This meeting is being held to consider the engineer's report filed under Section 78 of the Drainage Act for the East Black Creek Municipal Drain. Chris Dietrich is present via Zoom to present this report." So welcome, Chris. Are you there? Not yet.
Right, unmute here.
There, good. We can't see you.
You can hear me now?
We can hear you, but we can't see you, so.
Yeah, I don't know. Can I get on video there?
Yes. We can hear you, Chris. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the East Black Creek Municipal Drain 2024. This project replaces an existing low-flow crossing in Lot 17 at Concession 3. You'll see that at the very southwest corner of the plan shown there. It has a contributing watershed of 5,975 hectares. The existing low-flow structure was installed under a report prepared by K-Smart Associates Limited dated December 21, 1981. Our report consists of the removal of the existing failed crossing and the construction of a new low-flow crossing in the same location. Our new construction includes the installation of four 1,030-millimeter by 740-millimeter corrugated metal pipe arch culverts. They're all 12 meters in length and will be beveled on each end. This makes up the flat section of our crossing measuring seven meters in length and along with two 13-meter ramps being cased in 150 millimeters of concrete, including wire, welded wire mesh as shown on our low-level crossing detail. We've estimated this project at $99,700 and at this time, I would be open to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Chris. I know there are a number of landowners here tonight. Are there any landowners in attendance that wish to make a comment on the engineer's report? Before that, please note that any concerns with the estimated assessment schedule can be heard at our quarterly revision and notice for the quarterly revision will be mailed out following the provisional adoption of the engineer's report. So does anyone have any questions other than? Okay, if you, excuse me, wait. I'd like you to come up to the desk. Yes, with question? Come up to the desk. Give us your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Mrs. Portz and address 4654, line 36. And it's the bridge which broke at my place, you know, in spring. It cracked already and yeah, the bridge is 40 years old, you know. It is an old bridge. If a heavy machinery goes over the bridge, it cracks, you know, with two tanks, with menu. You know, it's too heavy, you know. Cracked already in spring, you know, it started. And I'd like to know how many tons a new bridge can carry.
Okay, Mr. Dietrich, can you tell us that?
I don't know the exact tonnage, but it's almost the, like, it's better than the bridge you have there now. So that one was built back in 1981 and it doesn't have the welded wires in it. So that's why the concrete failed. So this particular bridge that we're going to be constructing will be a stronger bridge than what you had.
That's good. Yeah, it's maybe more expensive too than the first bridge.
Well, that, the inflation that we see over the last 43 years is a part of it, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that's the only question I have about the tons, you know, so I can, I know because the machine is getting more and more heavier and heavier, so the bridge has to be very sturdy.
Yes, and all the pipes are going to be backfilled with a granular material and compacted, so it's going to be a very solid structure.
Is there a warranty on the bridge? I mean, that so many years, nothing will happen to the bridge?
I know that there's a construction warranty under the act of a year, but beyond that, I don't know of any warranties. But it should last, you know, if you get through that first year, it's going to last. And again, I hope another 50 years.
Yeah. So now we're not alive anymore. So when are you starting to build the bridge?
Well, the next step is after all the bylaws and everything are passed, the drain will go for tender and it gets tendered for a bunch of different contractors and then we'll know the starting date. Depending on who's awarded the contract.
I have another question. My neighbor who is renting the field, the backfield, 8 acres, in spring he put some big wooden boards there in order to get over the bridge with the tractors. Are you removing these big boards?
The entire structure that's currently there is going to get removed and disposed of off-site.
Okay, that's good. That's all what I wanted to know. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Could you please come to the desk and give your name and address?
Hello, my name is Ross Yancey, 4165, line 50. I'm just wondering, like, this seems like a signed and sealed deal and I just got this notification tonight, which seems very strange. I don't even know where the bridge is and haven't had a chance to even look at it. But obviously, I'm not sure what the purpose of the meeting is.
Okay, Mr. Dietrich?
Basically, this meeting is to consider a low-level crossing that's existing there. It's 43 years old and it's failed, so we're replacing it with a new low-level crossing. So this isn't designed to handle all flows. It's designed to handle the low flow and all of the exceeding flows will go over this concrete deck and continue on. And there is a structure there currently that was built under the Drainage Act. In 1981.
Would there be a cheaper way of doing it? Or this is already settled and delivered?
There wouldn't be. Not under, this is a very large ditch.
Okay.
Questions on the.
Okay, other questions? Okay, could you come to the desk, please?
Steve Parker, 4476, line 38. I also have this ditch going through my property. I also have a low-level crossing through it. It's been there forever. And as far as I know, there has never been anybody have to pay for somebody else's low-level crossing. When did this start, Mr. Dietrich? And what size is the old one that you want to replace?
Chris, are you there?
I am, yep. So the existing one is a four-pipe structure of similar diameters and it was built in 1981 under the Drainage Act and it had a distribution of costs in the same relative proportions of what we have today. It's a little bit off, but you know, it's really on what we deem as fair. So that was built back in 1981. And if you needed to replace your culvert in the future, you could petition, sort of request under Section 78 to get that done as well. An engineer would be appointed and he'd design a new structure.
Well, we've talked to numerous people in the neighborhood and nobody ever remembers having to pay for this one when it was put in. It's private property. It's a private bridge. Why is everybody else upstream having to pay for something that we can't use? And there is access to this property without going through that ditch. There is a township road goes right to that property.
I don't know if the mayor or council can reflect on the access from the road, but I know there was no, I don't know, they didn't have access to the back of the farm.
They do. There is a township road goes right to the property, so. You used to go there.
Yeah, I used to.
Yep. Well.
Excuse me. Steve, do you have any more questions?
Well, my comment is, is that if we, if we as taxpayers pay for this one, you're opening a can of worms for every Tom, Vic and Harry wanting to cross and putting across their ditch. I've farmed for 45 years, never needed no crossing and I've got more land on the other side of that ditch than this property has and I don't have any other access without crossing a neighbor's property to get to it.
Okay.
So I won't be paying for this. This is a private business. I also disagree with putting more beaver dams in the ditch. We already have two just further downstream and we have nothing but problems with water at our farm because there's thousands of acres of tile and stuff they dump into that ditch and it all dumps on my place. Township built up the road. Now there's no access for the water to get across the road. It all has to go through the bridge on line 39 and there's no place for water to go. And I end up with water flooding at my place all the time, which never used to happen. Yes, just spring runoff and stuff and I have to accept that. I bought that property with that ditch on it. I knew it when I bought it. But this is, this is a bad can of worms if we're going to start paying for private bridges on everybody's property. The farm just west of this paid for their own bridge when the driveway, on their driveway.
Okay, Chris, do you have any comments?
All I can say is this is a municipal drain, so it's paid for by the owners within the municipal watershed and everybody's entitled to one crossing. After that, the landowner has to pay 100% of anything that he wants. When it comes to bridges, I can't say that I've ever come across one, but that would be up to the landowner and they probably paid a really big share of that bridge. But I can't say for certain of how that penciled out or whether it was done under the act. I don't know.
Well, I don't feel.
This is done under the Drainage Act of Ontario.
Well, this is wrong and I'm sure there's a lot of taxpayers feel the same way that I do, that we should not be paying for this. If you want a cement crossing on your own property, knock yourself out. But I don't see why I have to pay for something for somebody else that I'm never going to be able to use.
Well, there is one there currently that was built in 1981 and it's basically the same structure as we're putting back, except for our structure's going to have a wire mesh in it to make sure that the failure that happened on that old one doesn't happen again.
Well, you just got done saying there's no warranty on these jobs, so who's to say what's going to happen in the future?
Well, yeah, you have your opinion, but that's about it. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anyone else? Questions from council? Amanda?
Just a comment. I am the Ellis Ward representative. I did want to, I know that there was a comment about just getting it in the mail. I did get a call today from Mr. Hardwood, who I believe is in the audience, who did let me know about that. So it seems that there is a Canada Post issue. I have let staff know that going forward, we need to be building in more time to make sure notices get out to the public and I'm hoping staff can let folks know in the audience for those who have concerns and want to perhaps dispute this, what the mechanism and next steps would be for those people that would like to go through that process, just for everyone's awareness. uh this, uh what the mechanism and next steps would be for those people that would like to go through that process, just for everyone's awareness. Um, so I don't know if someone from staff, Eric, uh, if you can please share that with the public for their awareness. Thank you.
For sure. Thank you. Um, so with regards to the mailing, we have to follow the legislative requirements within the Drainage Act. That requires a ten day notice. Um, when a engineer files a report, it's a quick turnaround, a very tight timeline. We have to take it to a council meeting within thirty days of receiving that report. Um, and then there was over two hundred plus properties assessed in this watershed, so that was all sent out within the legislative requirement of ten days' notice. Um, as for next steps, if landowners are disappointed or don't agree with their assessment, they can file an appeal to the quarter revision, which, as the mayor had mentioned, will be sent out, a notice of that will be sent out following the conclusion or the adoption of the report. Um, you can appeal to the quarter revision to have your assessment changed. Um, that is entirely up to your right and it's up to the quarter revision to change the assessment schedule. If you have an appeal for any other technical issue within the engineer's report, there is another mechanism, an appeal to the Ontario Drainage Tribunal. And you can get in contact with myself or with Ashley Carter, our clerk, and we can help you through that process. But for anything to do with the assessment schedule, that goes to our quarter revision, which notice will be sent out following the adoption of this report.
Okay, any questions?
And all I could add to that is if you do have concerns uh about the costs uh on your property, make sure that you bring in some proof to that quarter revision that we can take it seriously.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll let Ivan go next because he hasn't spoke yet. Do you want to come up to the chair, please?
Four six nine three line forty-four, Route Two Gethso. My concern is not so much with what's going to be done with this crossing. The crossings needed, uh, I would assume that alternatives were pursued, that less costly ones were pursued. If not, they should have been. I'd like that answered. The lateness of this delivery, mine came in the mailbox today, that's critical. I think in a world today where we're living with the, with the information speedway which it can be decimated around, that email would be much better i- if this kind of information were emailed out, or at least a notice of it was emailed out, rather than if I ever, our mail is so erratic, it's unbelievable. Uh, sometimes we we go days without mail. Depending on the delivery person, they're having their own problems. But yeah, I would recommend that from now on that an email be sent out that would make at least uh a notice of an email in regard to something like as important as this. Hopefully, there were cheaper alternatives looked at. I'd like to know that. Uh, I'd like to know what those costs would have been compared with cost. I mean, I have no objections of paying into something that's going to benefit everybody in the township, including myself, and no problem with that. Uh, I'd like to know from this last one in eighty-one, we've heard so much about eighty-one, it's almost branded my brain already, uh, what those costs were and how they were shared then. I'd like some proof of that because right now it's just what we're, what we're being told. I'd like to see some evidence of that because that would bolster then the, what you're trying to get done here now. So like I said, I have no objection to it, uh, but I just like a little more information and I'd like a little bit more um advanced notice, and I think email would be the best way to go with that. So that's where I'm going to leave in my, my statement or my question. Okay, thank you.
I do know the notices were mailed out the first Friday of the month. Unfortunately, Canada Post didn't get them to your mailboxes until. Yeah, that's unfortunate. Email, email is not a hundred percent proof either. Right?
I can, I can respond to cheaper options and things like that. Um, this is a very large creek by the time we get to this property. Um, and drive-throughs is not an option with the Conservation Authority. So even though, um, you know, people may think that this is just a beaver dam, it's not. Uh, there's four large pipes in there, um, which takes, you know, a majority of the flow. There's going to be storms where the water's flowing over top, uh, and that the, the farmer can't crop. But that's the biggest thing about agriculture is normally when it's storm and rain, uh, the farmers aren't out there regardless.
And do you have any, uh, he asked about nineteen eighty-one. Do you have any of that information?
I I have some, some dollars and cents from nineteen eighty-one, yes. Uh, basically, in nineteen eighty-one, uh, the, the port itself or the low-flow crossing cost eighteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And the benefit there was seven thousand, so that equates to about thirty-eight point five percent.
And who paid for that? Was it shared by all the? I think that.
Uh, the remainder would be spread across as a, as a no let. Assessment, just like ours.
Okay. Other questions? Eric?
Sorry, I just wanted to mention that the legislative requirement for us as staff is to mail them, physically mail them out. So that's where that's coming from. We physically have to mail these notices out per the legislation.
Okay. Anyone else with any other questions? Any other questions for members of council? Andrew?
Uh, thank you, Mary. It's, um, I, I do not farm and I, I do not pretend to know anything about the Drainage Act more than what I've learned in the last while. But those type of benefits, so some of the questions tonight, I think it's a good project. So what's the benefit to everybody on this list other than the landowner's services to cross the creek? That's kind of my only question, really, just so I can understand. Thank you.
For sure, not a problem. Uh, basically, everybody within the watershed, it's a municipal watershed. Uh, so they're responsible for the water that runs off their land. It may run into a few municipal drains before it ever enters this drain. But eventually, it's going to be going through this culvert. Um, so they're responsible for the water off their land. Now, we have uh equated all the different lands, whether it be bushland, agricultural land, residential land, or roadways, uh, a bunch of different factors, and they're all coming in at one, which is where the culvert is, uh, and we spread that across the watershed. So, you know, farmers are paying kind of per acre. Uh, we, we assess them at one, and then we did assess the roads at a higher. So gravel would be three, paved would be four, uh, and then bushlands we assess at point six. So that's how we came up with all of those numbers.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions for members of council? If not, we do have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East receive the presentation from Chris Dietrich, Drainage Engineer, Dietrich Engineering Limited, East Black Creek Municipal Drain, twenty twenty-four, lots thirteen to seventeen, concession three, lots eleven to seventeen, concession four, lots five to fifteen, concession five, lots three to fourteen, concession six, lots two to thirteen, concession seven, lots one to twelve, concession eight, lots one to eighteen, concession nine, lots one to seventeen, concession ten, lots one to seventeen, concession eleven, lots one to fifteen, concession twelve, lots one to fourteen, concession thirteen, lots one to three, concession fourteen, and part of lot one, concession fifteen, Ellis Ward, Township of Perth East, County of Perth, and further that the quarter revision for the East Black Municipal Drain, twenty twenty-four, be held on October sixteen, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty P M. We have a mover and a seconder for this. Moved by Bob, second by Jeremy. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, moving on, uh, we don't have any delegations. We do have public meetings. In our first, first public meeting, I declare this public meeting to be open. This public meeting is held to consider proposed zoning bylaw amendment affecting land property currently owned by Susan and Mavis Llewellyn, Plan Five Eleven, Lot Forty-nine, Two Fifty-six, Huron Road, Seaburnville. This meeting is an opportunity for the township to advise the public of the purpose and intent of the amendment and receive their input prior to considering adoption of an implementing bylaw. If a bylaw is adopted to implement the zoning amendment, a notice of passing will be forwarded by prepaid first-class mail to various agencies of interest and others who have requested notice. An appeal to the Interior Land, Land Tribunal objecting to the adoption of the bylaw may be filed with a clerk no later than a date stated on the notice. Any person attending this meeting who wishes to receive written notice of a bylaw passed to implement the amendment is asked to give their name and mailing address to the clerk following this meeting. No written notice except as previously noted will be given unless requested in writing following the meeting. All persons attending this meeting will be given an opportunity to be heard or make a presentation. I will now call on Planner Jeff Bannon to present the planning report and recommendations. Jeff, welcome. And the floor is yours.
Jane Street, this is mistakenly known as Two Five Six, Huron Road in Seaburnville. Application is to rezone a portion of the lands from Hamlet Village Residential, an H V R dash fourteen zone to an amended H V R dash fourteen zone with zoning provisions to allow for a seven-unit apartment dwelling and a reduction in the required parking from eleven spaces to five spaces. Existing zone currently allows for and is occupied by a six-unit apartment dwelling. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing space within the basement of the apartment building into an apartment dwelling and to remove the existing parking area at the rear of the property. The proposal is also requesting that reduction in the required parking spaces from eleven to five. And next slide, please. The property is designated as village and floodplain within the Perth County official plan, and it's zoned as H V R dash fourteen and floodplain in the Perth East zoning bylaw. The official plan establishes planning priorities to recognize the need to direct and focus urban and non-farm related growth to the designated settlement areas and to allow for orderly growth of those service settlement areas while protecting, preserving and enhancing natural resources. Next slide, please. The area of the subject land is zero point one seven hectares, which is a little less than point five hect- acres in size. There's a private septic and well on the property and road access is from Huron Road. Public notice was provided to the neighboring property owners on August twenty-eighth. No comments have been received from the public prior to the completion of this planning report. And one resident, after the report was completed, verbally spoke uh to planning and they expressed concerns with the septic capacity and uh flooding that has happened in the basement of that property in the past. Next slide, please. The proposed development represents a reduction in parking spaces that will, that will create parking concerns in the area. The applicant has suggested that additional parking could be accommodated on the adjacent lands to the east of the property. Parking arrangement has been agreed to by the adjacent landowner, but the applicant has decided to pursue a reduction in the number of required parking spaces instead of providing a permanent easement over top of those lands to provide for those parking. The submitted sketch shows three parking spaces at the front of the dwelling that may result in the need to back out onto Huron Road, which is a provincial highway. The design also shows a retaining wall along the east side of the property and a well that restricts access to the other two parking spaces that are located within the existing building. As an easement has not been provided uh on the adjacent property, the residents then needed to trespass onto the adjacent land to access those two parking spaces. The proposed development represents a development that does not officially use the land and resources and could cause safety concerns with unsafe traffic movements, and as a result, is not consistent with the provincial policy statement. The Upper Thames River Conservation Authority has identified that with their updated flood modeling, they, it now shows a flood hazard that is larger than what is currently mapped and that much of the existing structure is located within the floodplain. Planning staff agree with the stated risk to person and property and are not supportive of placing new residential dwelling units within the floodplain. The Upper Thames River Conservation Authority is generally not supportive of intensification within those hazard lands or within lands that are inaccessible during times of flooding. And the land use permit is required from the Upper Thames Conservation Authority before a building permit could be issued on the lands. Although the County of Perth official plan does allow for small apartment dwellings containing eight units or less, the development does not represent a logical or orderly growth within that settlement boundary as parking cannot be provided on the lands. A consent application would be needed in order to register an easement over the top of the adjacent lands to the east. The zoning bylaw requires provision of eleven parking spaces for a seven-unit apartment dwelling. The proposed concept plan shows two parking spaces that can't be accessed without trespassing and only three parking spaces at the front of the dwelling. Planning staff are unable to support a reduction in the parking requirement to the requested five spaces, which would result in the continued uh need of the neighboring property in order to access the parking as there's no property easement. Next slide, please. We have received comments from Blue Water Recycling. They have responded and noted that municipal waste and recycling services may not be possible for the property. Upper Thames, as mentioned, uh, have noted that the regulated area has changed as a result of the updated flood modeling and access to their unit from the rear of the building is within the flood plain, as well, the window and door openings are generally below the floodline. So they have concerns with that basement apartment being, unit being constructed. Uh, they recommend that a zoning bylaw application is refused on the basis that it does not meet the provincial policy statement or their environmental planning policies. Uh, they also note that interior works uh would require, um, may require an update to their existing septic system, which requires a permit from the Upper Thames. And they're not generally supportive of increasing septic capacity for hazard lands uh when um you're developing within that, that area for residential unit. The M T O has also responded and noted that the owner is required to obtain an entrance permit and that the existing access does not meet the M T O d- design guidelines and requirements. They do feel that there's not enough space to navigate um to the proposed parking lot, their parking spaces at the side of the building or to access the garage. Uh, parallel parking needs to be set back a minimum of three meters and uh access permit would be required from M T O. So as a result, planning staff are unable to support the proposed planning amendment as we feel it does not meet, is not consistent with provincial policy statement, does not maintain the intent of the official plan or the Perth East zoning bylaw. Available to answer any questions?
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? Anyone speaking against? Are you speaking against?
No, I'm not. I'm speaking for.
Okay, hang on. Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? Are you the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, just anybody else that wishes to speak in support? Okay, please come to the.
Hey, Jeff, good to see you. Uh, my name is Mark Whitaker. I own Whitaker Construction. Uh, I do most of the work on Two Fifty-Six Huron Road. I'm independently contracted as such. Uh, I work with Upper Thames Conservation Authority as well as a number of other conservation authorities uh in regards to floodplain models, engineering, uh, you name it, we kind of do it. The floodplain modeling that they show, could you bring that up for me? Um, the floodplain modeling they show actually only touches the back corner of the building, and that's an updated model. It does not actually affect the ingress or egress of the lower unit uh as the uh, the door for the unit is on the west side of the building. And there is separate exits to the front of the building on that side. As uh West Reed can verify, we put that ingress egress out there uh this past year.
Go ahead.
Yeah, through Mary, it's, um, there is a reconstructed uh deck at the rear of the property that was very rotten. Um, there was a building permit to replace uh some of the rotten decks on the existing building.
Uh, the lower unit itself has two entrances and two exits. Uh, one entrance is from the north side, uh, which is not in floodplain. And the other exit is through the garage, which is also not in floodplain. The apartment itself is not in floodplain. The floodplain, if I could say, kisses the corner of the building. And that was Upper Thames, that was their issue, was that it was in floodplain as they were concerned. The unit itself, the building itself, is structurally sound. I've had an engineer come in and verify that, uh, that it is in good shape for its age. Um, the owner has spent about a quarter of a million dollars in upgrades to the building to make it better. to make it better and to bring it up to code with the fire department, with the building department as she is continuing to be a good neighbor and be a good owner. This eighth unit in the bottom, as for the septic, this septic was originally designed to handle eight units and we have verification of that. So there is no requirement to increase that unless there has to be some sort of a, an assessment done. The rest of the application, as for the parking at the front, the parking at the front, under our current design, it's been amended basically. We haven't had a chance to bring it in. It is removing the three parking spots at the front of the building permanently. We have agreed to an easement with the neighbor to allow for proper turnaround, proper parking. The MTO has agreed to this. Then they have asked for a meeting between myself and Mr. Bannon to finalize all the details on that as well. At this time, all right, sorry, Blue Water, I've spoke with them and informed them of what was going on and they said under the current situation, they can continue to do garbage disposal and pickup, that they're not going to discontinue that. Parking at the rear of the building is still going to be viable because of this new easement. There won't be a problem with, with parking, but that's something that Mr. Bannon and I can go over in, as soon as you got time. At this time, I think that it's prudent that the owner and her agent defer this and put it down the road until all of our paperwork can be put through, the easement can be legally put on title. The owner of 252 Huron Road, which is the mill, which is the property with the easement that would be placed on it, is here tonight. His name's Chris and he can speak as to his willingness to allow the easement to go through and his support of this. And that's all I have for each night.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support?
Chris Keffer. I own the property in 252 Huron Road and we've been in discussion with different ideas and plans to try to make this work and yeah, we're willing to give an easement so that this can be, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in support? Okay, now the applicant, would you like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Susan Llewellyn and this is my mother, Mavis. When we first looked at 256 Huron Road in 2020, it was rundown and it had been neglected. It was apparent that several things were not up to code, but we saw a lot of potential in the building. Someone just had to care enough to put the work into it and do the right thing. It needed more work than we anticipated, but from the very beginning, we've always tried to reach out to the right parties and do the right thing, everything legal. To make everything safe and legal for the tenants, we're trying to upgrade this property to a safe, comfortable place to live and we've spent a lot of money bringing the building up to code. We're not rich people, we don't have deep pockets, we're not a big corporation and we're not a development company. It's just my 95-year-old mother and me trying to make an investment in what we see as a great building. We've worked hard all our lives trying to have something to retire with. Everything we have is in this building and if we can't increase its income so it can pay for itself, which this seventh unit will help do, the seventh unit was already built and it had been from the previous owner, he had built it and he rented it illegally. So when we took over the building, we evicted the tenant and proceeded to leave it until we could bring everything properly up to code and properly rezone it. So, yeah, we've worked hard all our lives. We're trying to get something to retire with. Everything we have is in this building and if we can't increase it to pay for itself, then retirement will remain a pipe dream. We'll never get there. Rezoning this unit means everything to us. We need this to happen if we ever hope to get anywhere with this and with the housing crisis what it is, the community needs good, decent, affordable apartments. Jeff, here, has worked hard with us to get this building to what it needs to be. The stress has been a lot on all of us and yet we all still see tremendous potential in this building, but only if we're allowed to go forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, is there any questions? Amanda?
Sort of some comments, a little bit, because my, and again, so our planner is recommending not to support it, which makes it really tough for counsel. Typically, it's very rare that counsel doesn't support staff's recommendations and, but it has happened before and I also want to say, I am a landlord myself, so I understand. I don't have a lot of deep topics either. I understand it's all about like future, so I really appreciate like what you're trying to do. I just want to make sure I have all the information available to me to make a decision for myself and also I represent Ellis Ward as well. So in communicating with Jeff, like obviously you guys knew coming tonight that he wasn't going to be supportive of it. So was there other conversations? Like what did that look like? Like could you provide some insight into that? Cause I think that that information would be valuable and I also know that there was a recommendation. So whatever is decided upon tonight, it can't be deferred again. So count, like there's, so there was a suggestion by one of your colleagues that it perhaps should be deferred, right? And so I also want to get a sense is, is that a true indication of what you're asking counsel tonight? Like could you, so those are two questions that I have, just so that we can help inform some of the decision-making tonight. You'll have to go to the mic.
It's very irregular that we'll let you speak now, but with counsel's permission, we will let you come to the table and speak.
My name is Jeff Caldwell and I am working with Susan and Mavis to try and make this apartment viable. The initial proposal that was given to the town planner for our rezoning was provided back in July and that was done with the best knowledge that we had at the time and after consulting with the town planner about some possible viable solutions, including the reduction in parking spaces. Last Wednesday, we received the responses from the MTO and the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority as well as Blue Water Recycling. And so admittedly, we were a little bit panicked at the last hour, as you can imagine, from Wednesday to today. And through that time, we have been able to discuss this again with, with Chris owns the mill next door, 252, regarding an easement. It's a different easement than was initially suggested for this to work and that easement was something that he could not agree to and I understand his reasons for that. This proposal has a different shaped easement that will preserve his property to be his sole property for future possibilities. That easement was agreed to this morning. So we are moving forward to register that on title. That, as Mark suggested, will allow us to now retain the parking spaces at the rear of the building. It will also give the extra width that's necessary to use two parking spaces inside the garage that you see halfway down the side of the building and we are prepared to give up the three parking spaces at the front of the building. We do need time to do this. As Mark suggested, the MTO is happy with our plan. The, the, the Conservation Authority's concerns Mark has begun to address and, and I would like to speak more to that as well, if I, if I may. And, and that concern, obviously not going through what I was planning to say tonight because of the timing. However, UTRCA response references provincial planning statement, DPS 2020, as its authority. But I would urge this council to, to pay attention to DPS 2024 because 2024 states in policy 5.2 dealing with natural hazards, 5.2.3 says, "Development and site alteration shall not be permitted within a floodway regardless of whether the area of inundation contains high points of land not subject to flooding." But 5.2.5 goes on to say, "Despite policy 5.2.3, development and site alteration may be permitted in certain areas associated with a flooding hazard along river, stream, and small inland lake systems where the development is limited to uses by which their nature must locate within the floodway, including minor additions or passive, non-structural uses which do not affect flood flows." And that is where 256 Huron exists, right? We're not affecting flood flows and we are housed in that floodplain with that rear corner of the building only, which with their updated site includes that rear corner. As Mark indicated, we've got an egress exit for that unit because it is to be a legal, safe unit and that egress exits to area that is not floodplain. So again, with what 5.2.5 says, it's by nature, it must locate within the floodway and it's a non-structural change to an existing building and it does not flood, affect flood flows. So yes, assuming that a decision in our favor cannot be made based on the proposal that we submitted and based on the new information that just came to our light last Wednesday, this past Wednesday, we are asking for a deferral. And in fact, we have discussed this with Mr. Bannon and I think we're both, I'm hoping that we're all interested in a deferral so that we have time to legitimize the plans that we had just put in place within the last 72 hours.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from counsel? Bob?
So Jeff, in the report, we have, the Conservation Authority has some concerns with any alterations to the building and wouldn't be granting any permits, it says here. And if there was a need for an upgraded septic, they again, wouldn't be issuing any permits for that. Can you speak to that then?
Yeah, through the mayor. So their concern is with safe access to the property and with potential flooding of a residential unit and then having those residents in that basement not being able to get back out of the property. Their understanding, my understanding at the time of writing the report was that the sole access to that downstairs unit is off the rear of the property. I understand that there's a second access that comes out of the garage, which may alleviate some of their concerns with having safe access. They are still concerned with development within the floodplain. The septic system is only a concern if it has to be expanded. That's why they need a permit if they have to expand. The applicants are telling us that they've done their due diligence and that they don't need to expand that septic system, so they wouldn't need a permit for that. But that information would be submitted as part of a building permit application.
Okay, other questions? Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. It's Planner Bannon, is there any cost to the proponents to defer, to discuss these points any further? Like is there any additional costs or fees for the proponents to discuss this further?
Through the mayor, there isn't an additional cost, there isn't an application cost or a deferral fee that I'm aware of with Perth East. Obviously there is additional costs with staff time, but that, that's the only cost that's really being realized with a deferral.
Okay, other questions? Jerry?
It's a comment through you, Mayor. I think it's still, the MTO, one of the speakers said that the MTO would allow all this, but your report suggests that because of the current design, they wouldn't allow it. It sounds like if they make some changes, they're still going to require a permit of sorts, correct?
Yeah, through, through the mayor. So yes, they do require a permit. So the existing entrance on the property, there's no permit for that entrance that's there now, where basically you have spaces for three vehicles to come in directly off of the street and it's perpendicular to the, to the street line. So they need an access permit for that. Sounds like they're willing to make changes to the front of the building. Right now, it's not safe bringing three cars into the building with that large driveway and they would like to see that have a scent, a single lane that comes into the building and you would potentially be able to put parallel parking for maybe up to two spaces parallel to the front of the building. What I'm understanding from the applicants is they're willing to remove the parking at the front of the building, have a driveway entrance that will take you to the parking at the rear. I've seen a quick sketch showing the potential for an easement on the neighboring lands. I'm not sure if it's wide enough to get traffic to the back of the property, but that's something that we would have to work out through further discussions. Typically, you would have six meters for a driveway width to give you access to that parking lot at the back of the property so that you'd have two-way traffic and you don't have conflicts if someone's leaving or coming to the property and meeting up within that small area because we know that they're just going to go out and around, which encourages trespassing onto the neighboring land. So ideally, you would like to have six meters. I don't think that's going to be possible in this case, so we'd like to see that increased to a width that would allow for some sort of safe access to that parking at the property.
Okay, Jeremy?
So one of the issues that you identified was parking spaces. So it needs 11. They're proposing five. Is that going to continue with the movement of the parking spaces from the front to the rear? Is the proposal still going to be to maintain five or will you be increasing that to closer to 11? I guess that.
So the new proposal, we'll be changing it to one parking spot per unit. So that's a total of seven parking spots available with none at the front, two in the garage in the basement and five at the back. There is room to actually put seven at the back, but because there is a septic tank at the back, I purposely took out two of the spaces to make sure that there is no risk to anybody driving over that septic tank and keep it intact and useful.
Okay, other questions from members of counsel? And then no questions, then counsel will consider a resolution regarding the planning report recommendation following the conclusion of the public meeting and bylaw 212-2023 to implement the approval of the zoning application will be considered later within the council agenda. So just so you know, we have another public meeting and after that public meeting, then counsel will look at a motion. Okay, so our next public meeting, this public meeting is being held to consider a proposed zoning bylaw amendment affecting property currently owned by Anna and Marshall Smith. Legal address, Plan 363, Lot 301, 4 Main Street South. And we're just going to jump right down to calling on Jeff to give his report and recommendations. Jeff, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So the subject land is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Mill Street West and Main Street South and is municipally known as 4 Main Street South. The application proposes to rezone the commercial C1 Zone to a C1 Zone with special provisions to allow for reduced building and parking setbacks, increased building height, reduced parking space requirements, dwelling units in the rear and on the upper floor of commercial buildings and within separate buildings that do not direct the front onto the street. So the subject lands contain a two and a half story building with commercial uses on the ground floor, residential uses to the rear and above that commercial land use. The applicant is looking to develop a four-unit townhouse dwelling with potentially having commercial uses at grade and the conversion of the existing garage into a residential dwelling unit. Next slide, please. Property is designated as central commercial in the Millverton official plan. Property is designated as central commercial in the Milverton official plan and is zoned as C one commercial in the Perth East zoning by law. Development represents a compact built form that facilitates residential and commercial land uses in the service settlement area. And if they are proposed, if they do propose live work townhouse units, that would provide an alternative housing type within the county. The proposal represents a gradual improvement to the core area and preserves existing building on the subject lands. The conversion of the existing garage into residential unit is located behind the commercial land uses that front on Main Street. And the remaining residential units are located to the rear or above the commercial business. Applicant has submitted a site plan application that will be processed following the rezoning approval. The proposed new building is located with no setback from Mill Street, which contributes to maintaining the compatible streetscape with other existing structure on the property. The site design on the subject lands and compatibility with the surrounding area is controlled through that site plan process. Next slide, please. Public notice was provided to the neighboring property owners on July twenty sixth. One comment was received from the owner of five Mill Street West. They expressed concerns about water runoff and future development impacts on their property in relation to the requested interior side yard setback, snow stockpiling and fencing to prevent vehicular trespassing. One other resident has reached out today asking about the location of the proposed building and we provided them with that information. Next slide, please. The proposed site specific zone recognizes the existing building setbacks. The applicant has also requested that a planting strip is not required for the proposed development. The zoning by law does not require a planting strip as adjacent lands are not zoned as residential. The minimum front yard and exterior side yard setback requirements are intended to provide for a similar setback along those street frontages. And the elimination of the required setback requirement for porches, steps and balconies recognizes the existing structure on the subject lands. And the elevated balcony that exists does not impede pedestrian movements. The reduction in the interior side yard setback and allowance of a maximum building height of twelve meters is intended to recognize the existing height on the two and a half story building. And the existing setback of the garage that is to be converted. Although the new construction is proposed to be constructed with a building height of ten meters, a building height with an allowance of twelve meters still results in a building that is compatible compatible in the area. The reduced interior side yard setbacks allow for the existing garage to be rebuilt in a similar location if needed in the future. The property includes a site plan agreement that was registered in two thousand and fourteen. The agreement includes seven, sorry, thirteen parking spaces for the existing building. The zoning by law recognizes the thirteen parking spaces being provided through the existing site plan agreement. And and requires a total of twenty four parking spaces for a complete build out of the property. The applicant has submitted a site plan concept that shows twelve surface parking spaces, eight parking spaces within the garages of the proposed live work units. So the applicant has requested a reduction in the parking requirement to sixteen parking spaces. Adjacent property owners express concerns with water runoff and future development impacts on his lands. Development will be reviewed as part of the site plan approval process to ensure that the adjacent lands are not negatively impacted by the development. And that an adequate turning area is required to ensure that the vehicles will not need to access or trespass on adjacent property. The applicant has confirmed that they will be providing a landscape strip between the two properties, which prevents some of that access concerns. So planning staff have no concern with the proposed zoning by law amendment as revised by staff. The zoning by law amendment allows for the construction of four new townhouse dwelling units with a new dwelling unit in the existing garage. And in our opinion, the application is consistent with provincial policy statement informs of the county of Perth official plan, the Milverton official plan and represents good planning. And again, I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? Speaking against? Seeing no one. Is there one, anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? Okay, Mr. Gerber, if you'd like to come up and give your name and address, please.
Roger Gerber, twenty seven Patricia Road, Stratford, Ontario. So I am the owner of five Mill Street West, which is the property, and I was the one who had the questions about the drainage. I have no problem with any of that. I looked, they sent me the plans or whatever. I guess I just would like to make a comment about the parking. And I'm pro development. I just don't want them on my land. So I just because liability is getting worse and worse when people run out of money, it seems that it can be negatively affected on people's property. I like to consider myself prudent in what I do. We allow we allow access through that driveway beside this property. We allow horse and buggies to access the back of the credit union so they're not coming down Main Street and turning into the credit union. I know that we had a medical call there one year with the fire department. I would hate to have to put a gate up there to stop the access. I think I'm well within my right to do that. I guess what I would like to see is that what I know when I have these issues, when parking ends up on our property, it becomes a civil issue. And I don't want to have a civil issue. So I know that right now currently there's a truck parked right in front of that where this proposal is to go tractor trailer all night long. I'm afraid you're going to get comments about Tito's having cars parked out in front of their property on Mill Street all day long. These are just some of the things I'm, I think you're going to, and when people run out of parking spaces, then they think that my place is the place to park. And I don't mind if they want to pay for it, although that is also a liability when you do that kind of a thing, when you run into agreements with people. So that's just my concern. The side yardage, I guess one question I have is the side yardage that is to be reduced to nil. So I just made a couple of notes here. And once again, I am pro development. I'm not against this project. I just want some questions answered, but. So the minimum front yard depth. I'm assuming front yard is Main Street. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And and I was trying to keep up with you, but you were going pretty fast, but anyhow. And the minimum rear yard depth, well, that's pretty self explanatory. No issues with that. The minimum interior side yard from one point two meters to nil. I'm assuming that is next to five Mill Street. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, that interior side yard setback is for the existing garage. And it is along the property line that would be on the south side.
Because I just, I guess my my thing is that that is not very clear to me. And I would just hate to see that because this is a draft, that it would get approved to Mill Side Yard and be on my side, and then all of a sudden the building gets shifted right next to our property. I did have concerns about windows being on that side of the building, but there is none in the drawing, so I have no issues with that. And that was, that's one of my questions. So anyhow, thank you for that. I'll go see what else I got made up here. I think that's it. My my only concern is the parking. I guess if the owners would like to give me their phone number so I can call them when there's some of the tenants parked on my property. I just don't like being the bad guy. I don't like towing cars. Because then all of a sudden it becomes an issue that somebody scratched a car. And anyways, I'm in favor of this. I'm in favor of this proposal with reservations about the parking. I I don't want to see it not go because of the parking. I just want, like to let council know about my parking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, where, does the applicant or the applicant's agent wish to make a presentation?
Hello, good evening. My name is Marshall Smith. I own this property with my wife Anna Smith. We've owned it for since two thousand and thirteen and we were residents of Milverton prior to that time. Going back to two thousand and thirteen when we bought this property, it was a vacant building, had suffered kind of fire and water damage. It was uninhabitable and we worked at the time with city staff. I see some of the city staff here actually at that time that that did work with us through that project in order to convert it to the apartments in the hotel or the insurance office that it is today. And we take great pride in this building. We care very much for Milverton and have a great concern for its, you know, measured growth, I'll say. So this proposal has been in our minds for a very long time, since two thousand and thirteen when we purchased the property. Now we're finally able to be before you, so I'm I'm glad to be here. I wanted to mention that, you know, we take the concerns of the community seriously and, you know, when we're talking about things like parking and parking on other properties, I think we've also been kind of the the subject of cars being on our, the site that haven't haven't belonged in the past. So we've been monitoring our own parking and it strikes us that there is a sufficient amount of parking today to serve those residents that currently live in our rental building. What we're adding here is also rental tenure units. And with that, we have the ability to limit the parking that our tenants are allowed to use on the property as part of their leases. So as far as the the parking concern goes, this is something that we can participate in, in in helping to control. There is parking available on the street. We know that while we do have some parking that's reserved on the site for our commercial tenants today. That oftentimes people will park in front of that business in order to frequent and and make use of of that amenity. Any new commercial space that comes about as a result of this along Mill Street, we anticipate that parking will function in a similar manner. Where people will pull up to the front and go into those businesses if they do, in fact, come into existence. As far as employees of those businesses, again, they'd be proposed to be flexible units that would be live work spaces. So the people occupying those units would also be the people working in those units. And those units individually would have two spaces each beyond what would be required to serve the existing existing building that's there today. So wanted to offer myself here to you for comments or questions if there were any. We're very interested in hearing what you have to say.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council members? Amanda?
I have a question more so for for staff on like parking enforcements and signage and fines and what is like our current like fines and would there be like a potential like opportunity if there was signs erected? Like, it sounds like there was like a big, big truck there now. And it's like obviously hard to provide notice to people about changes when they're kind of just parking there just because, because they feel like you would.
Act of this development is isn't overly significant, not to undersell it, but I think we certainly have the capacity at this point in time. And as the community grows, we're looking to expand our capacity over time as well with taking into account developments such as this and some of the bigger ones. So I don't see that as a problem.
If I may, the second one then goes to Mr. Mr. Smith. Appreciate this. This is, this is going to be awesome for that little portion of Mill Street. Do we have any potential tenants at this point for the businesses? That's because we do have a couple of spots downtown currently that are vacant. Maybe a second part of that would be the rental up top. It's rental, so it could be anybody, not necessarily somebody that's working below. It's going to be opened up for anyone to to rent, correct?
Uh, yes, three, Madam Mayor, yes, that's that's correct. That the two portions of the unit could be rented together to a single tenant who wants to live and work in in the space. The commercial spaces aren't large. They're under four hundred square feet, so it might be, you know, appropriately used for offices, kind of some smaller boutique shops that people may want to start as kind of, you know, smaller startup businesses. I think they'd be unique spaces that would differ from what exists along Main Street, which are typically some larger spaces that were were built in another time. I hope I hope I've answered the question.
Okay, other questions? Jeremy?
Jeff, you confused me with the parking. You said sixteen at one point, that it was sixteen below what it was supposed to be. I thought I caught that, but I also heard that it needed twenty four and it had twenty. So I was a little confused as to how many spaces are actually required for that entire property and how many are actually there?
Through the mayor, so the required number of parking spaces is twenty four and they're asking for a reduction of that down to the six. I just want to make sure I get this correct. Do you believe it is sixteen? Sorry, yeah, it is a reduction down to sixteen. You're counting twenty because there's two spaces inside that garage, but they're not accessible to everybody at any given point in time. So we can only count in the zoning by law, we can only count one of those spaces as being for the residential unit. So even though there's two there, which provides more parking than what the request is for. One of those two spaces wouldn't be accessible to a visitor potentially or someone coming to the business because it's closed in by a garage door.
Okay, other questions? Seeing none, then we have council will consider a resolution regarding a planning report recommendation following the conclusion of the public meeting. By law, two one four dash two zero two four to implement the approval of the zoning application will be considered later within the council agenda. The public meeting is now concluded and we will continue with the regular meeting of council. Okay, so we're going to go back to the first public meeting that we had, and that was on the property in Shearenville. We do have a motion. Is everyone okay with that motion or they want to do something different? Hugh? Okay, do we have a second here? Amanda, so moved by Hugh, second by Amanda. And we, I will read it that the council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the planner dated September seventeen, two thousand and twenty four, entitled zoning by law amendment D fourteen dash Z twelve dash two thousand and twenty three P E. Submitted by Jeff Caldwell on behalf of Susan and Mavis DeWellen affecting lands described as Plan five eleven lot forty nine, Alice Ward, township of Perth East, two fifty six Huron Road. For information. That council held a statutory public meeting pursuant to section thirty four of the Planning Act with respect to zoning by law amendment two one two dash two zero two three and that council defer zoning by law amendment two one two dash two zero two three. That was moved by Hugh, second by Amanda. All in favor? Carrie? Okay, and in our second public meeting. We have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the planner and student planner dated September seventeen, two thousand and twenty four, entitled zoning by law amendment D fourteen dash Z fourteen dash two zero two four dash P E. Submitted by Anna and Marshall Smith affecting lands described as lot three oh one, Plan three six three, Milverton Ward in the township of Perth East, four Main Street South. For information and that council held a statutory public meeting pursuant to section thirty four of the Planning Act with respect to zoning by law amendment two one four dash two zero two four and that council approved zoning by law amendment two one four dash two zero two four. Moved by Jerry, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. Okay. I'm really sorry, but I need a two minute break. If we could have that. Okay, we're back and we're going to have a public meeting. Hearing, sorry, public hearing. Council will now temporarily adjourn to sit as committee of adjustment pursuant to Section 45 of the Planning Act. I now declare this public hearing open. This public hearing is being held to consider an application affecting property currently owned by William J. Gees Construction Limited, Cedar Rose Homes and described as Plan 44M80, Lot 28, Milverton Ward, 117 Pugh Street, Milverton. The purpose of this hearing is to give the committee and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the proposed application and receive their input and for the committee to make a decision on the application. All persons attending this hearing will be given an opportunity to be heard or make a presentation. Committee members may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application that are asked to withhold comments in this application until all present have been given an opportunity to be heard. Any person who wishes to receive written notice of the decision made by the committee of adjustment is asked to email their name and mailing address to the Secretary of Treasury at this time. An appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal objecting to the decision made at this hearing may be filed by the applicant, the municipality, the minister, or prescribed utility providers with the Secretary of Treasury no later than October 7, 2024. No written notice except as previously noted will be given unless requested at this time. And now we'll call on our planner Joshua to present the planning report and recommendations. So welcome, Joshua. And the floor is yours.
Very much. Good evening, everybody. All righty. Minor variance application A10 2024 was submitted by Cedar Rose Homes to request a minor zoning bylaw relief to lands mistakenly known as 117 Pugh Street in Milverton. Application A1024 has been submitted to request relief from Section 12.2.7 of the Perth East zoning bylaw. The requested relief would allow for your maximum lot coverage on the subject lands to be increased from 40 to 46% in order to facilitate the development of a single detached dwelling on the subject lands. The Planning Act outlines for tests for minor variance. The subject application is found to conform to both the service urban area policies of the county official plan and the residential designation policies as outlined in the Milverton Ward official plan. With the exception of the requested relief, the subject application conforms to all provisions of the special residential low-density R1-3 zone currently in effect on the subject lands. The requested relief is considered to be minor in nature as the proposed dwelling will be of similar size to the other properties within the surrounding neighborhood. And adequate grading, drainage, and parking will still be able to be provided. As a result of the previous, the requested relief is considered by planning staff to be appropriate for the subject lands. Staff receive no agency or public comments regarding the subject application. The subject application is found to be consistent with provincial and municipal policy. As a result, planning staff are supportive of the, sorry, are supportive of the subject application and recommend that the Perth East Council approve minor variance application A10 2024. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? Seeing no one, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? Seeing no one, does the applicant or the applicant's agent wish to make a presentation or speak with respect to the application? No. Are there any questions from committee members? No questions. The committee will now consider a motion regarding the application. And the motion is that the township of Perth East Committee of Adjustment received a report prepared by the planner dated September 17, 2024, entitled Minor Variance Application D13-A10-2024-PE, submitted by Cedar Rose Homes Limited on behalf of William J. Gees Construction Limited for lands described as Lot 28, Plan 44M80, Milverton Ward, Township of Perth East, 117 Pugh Street. For information, and that the committee approved minor variance application D13-A10-2024-PE as it relates to number one, relief from Section 12.2.7 of the Perth East zoning bylaw to increase the maximum lot coverage from 40% to 46% to facilitate the construction of a single detached dwelling subject to the following conditions. And we have one condition, that the applicant obtains a necessary building permit within the two years of the approval of the minor variance. Need a mover in the secondary, moved by Amanda, second by Hugh. In favor? Carrie, I declare this public hearing closed. Okay, we're going to move on to reports. And under planning, the first one is a part lot control application submitted by Dixie Developments on care of Heidi Fall. And I believe Jeff is going to do that, so Jeff, the floor is yours.
Including the further separation of lands created within a registered plan subdivision, do not apply to lands within such plan subdivision or parts thereof as described in the bylaw. County of Perth is the delegated approval authority under the Planning Act for bylaws to remove part lot control for lands within Perth East and the member municipalities in the county. The removal of part lot control to establish the lot lines between units of the semi-detached dwelling is an accepted method of lot creation under the Planning Act. Once exempting bylaws approved, surveys reference plans showing the lot lines is completed and registering in the land registry office, and then that bylaw would be in effect for a period of two years, after which time the provisions of the Planning Act would be reinstated. Staff are supportive of the proposed part lot control exemption and as such, planning staff recommend that Perth East Council approve the application and forward the bylaw to the County of Perth for approval. And also that the approved bylaw be provided to the township of Perth East to be registered on title. And just a point of clarification in the report, there was a syntax error referencing West Perth and it should read Perth East, just for your knowledge.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Any questions of the report? No questions. We have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East received a report prepared by the planner dated September 17, 2024, entitled Part Lot Control Application PLC-03-2024-PE, submitted by Dixie Developments, Inc., care of Heidi M. Fall for lands legally described as Lot 87, Plan 331, in the southeast of Port and the township of Perth East, 3985 Milton Street, Shakespeare. For information, that council approved the application by Dixie Developments, Inc., care of Heidi M. Fall for the exemption from part lot control on lands described above and forward the bylaw to the County of Perth for approval. And that bylaw 51-2024 be approved and the clerk be directed to register the bylaw on title. Moved by Bob, second by Andrew. All in favor? Carried. Thanks, Jeff. Enjoy the rest of your night. Okay, next one is consent to sever application. And this is for Lucas Danan, and I believe Joshua is doing that, so. Joshua, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Consent to sever application B39 2024 was submitted by Montith Ritzma Phillips Professional Corporation on behalf of Lucas Danan to sever a surplus farm dwelling from the lands mistakenly known as 3994 Road 108. Surplus farm dwelling severances are regulated by Section 5.6.3.1 of the Perth County Official Plan. Planning staff are satisfied that all provisions outlined by the aforementioned section are meant by the subject application. As a condition of consent, the applicant will be required to submit a zoning bylaw amendment, application for these subject lands to rezone the severed lands to allow for a non-farm residential use and to rezone the retained lands to prohibit the development of any new residential use in order to protect the existing farming operation. Staff received comments from the Blue Water Recycling Agency, the Upper Tenne River Conservation Authority, Hydro One, and Bell Canada. No agency had any objections. A public comment was received from the neighbor to the immediate south expressing support for the subject application. The subject application is found to be consistent with provincial and municipal policy. As a result, planning staff are supportive of the subject application and recommend that the Perth East Council advise the Land Division Committee that it supports application B39 2024. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Questions of the report? I have one question. Is the lot not a little large?
Yes, so the lot that was put forward by the applicant is a little bit enlarged by an accessory dwelling that exists to the west of the primary dwelling. But the applicant has indicated that they are currently in the process of removing the accessory dwelling. But it is still there today.
Okay, does council, Amanda?
Can it be like a condition? Like can we like reduce the lot size and just say that like that accessory dwelling has to come down?
I believe during, I'm calling her if you're during our, actually. I, I want to make sure I get this right. Jeff on this one, just to make sure.
That's fair. We're putting you on the hot seat.
Through the mayor, so if council would like to see either the parcel size reduced in size or removal of accessory dwellings, those could be included as conditions of the consent approval?
Okay, anyone else have that concern or everybody's good with it? Okay, we can send it to Land Division and see what they do. They like the recommendation to come from us, what we want, but. So we have, there are several conditions. I'll give you the short version of them. Council Township of Perth East received a report prepared by the planner dated September 17, 2024, entitled Consent to Sever Application B39-24, submitted by Montith Ritzma Phillips Professional Corporation on behalf of Lucas Danan for lands described as concession one, part lot, part lot 26, southeast of Port, Township of Perth East, 3994 Road 108. For information, as council advise the Land Division Committee or its delegated authority that the township of Perth East supports application B39-2024, subject to the following conditions. And we have six conditions. These are Perth East. The first one is that all taxes have been paid in full. The second one, all financial requirements have been met. The third one, that the apportionment schedule of municipal drains in the area are reviewed and updated. The fourth one, amendment to the Township of Perth East zoning bylaw has been adopted to zone the proposed severed lot to prevent owning a dwelling and accessory uses, buildings and structures, and to zone retained lots, lands to prohibit any new permanent residential dwellings. The fifth one, that the severed and retained lots each have assigned separate municipal addresses and signs. And the sixth one is that the road access to the severed and retained parcels are to their satisfaction. And then the Perth County has three conditions. And they are, number one, that the certificate of the official will be scanned and attached to the electronic registration of the transfer. The second one, Land Division Committee, he provided with a description that is consistent with the application and equal to that required for registration of the deed/transfer. And the third one, that confirmation be received. The property owner has entered into an agreement with the County of Perth to prohibit any new permanent residential dwellings on the retained farm lots. So I need a motion, moved by Hugh, second by Jeremy. All those in favor? Carried. Okay. Good. Thanks, Joshua. You have a good night as well. Okay, we're moving to CIO. First one is unclaimed deposits on site plans. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. It's, this report is really kind of addressing housekeeping measures that we're implementing to clear some dated site plan deposits that have accumulated over a number of years. In many instances, either the property ownership has changed- over a number of years. In many instances, either the property ownership has changed, corporation that own it may have dissolved and maybe in certain circumstances, the property owners, the existing property owners, the prior property owner, I should say, has deceased. So we're trying to, from an accounting standpoint, an auditing standpoint, clean up some of these files, recognizing in, within the report would contain that if, if the original depositor returns and confirms their initial deposit and that the works have been completed, we would return it, but it's just a matter that these are dating back to two thousand and three, so we're trying to clear them up. And we have implemented some new practices within amongst staff to make sure that these aren't aging to the same extent. So, are there any questions I can try and answer?
Okay, thank you. Questions, Jerry?
Thanks through you. Eric, should we put a timeline on that? Would you suggest, Mike, is if someone comes back next week and says, oh yes, I want this, once they see this, they might open up their their brain and say, oh yes, I do have that sitting there. I don't know. Should there be a timeline?
Through you, Mayor, it's from a legal perspective, Counselor Smith, we have to return the deposit if they do come back to us, no matter how long it's still dated, we still have to honor that. It's just from an accounting and auditing standpoint, having them just sitting for a number of years creates uncertainty and having seventy thousand dollars that kind of looks like, from an audit standpoint, it's like, what are you guys doing? You need to address this and this is the intent. And to your initial point, part of the reason to bring forward the report is to get more information out there that if people are have deposits, they need to reach out and they have some due diligence in this matter as well. We're making best efforts, but it's kind of twofold, the report itself.
Okay, other questions? No, we have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East receive the report prepared by the Chief Administrative Officer dated September seventeen twenty twenty four entitled Unclaimed Deposits Site Plan CIO dash two zero two four dash fourteen for information. And further, that council approves where appropriate, moving unclaimed site plan deposits to general revenue when staff have exhausted efforts to locate the depositor on deposits received between two thousand and three and two thousand and nineteen and site plan works have been completed. Moved by Bob, second by Amanda. All in favor? Carried. Okay, and the next report is Ben Met Nois complaint. Mike?
Thanks Mayor, I guess this is basically a follow up information report for council awareness as it relates to the Ben Met Steel issuing the noise complaints. Wanted to update council on all the information that we've received and the back and forth that has happened between staff and representatives through Ben Met. I think at this point, there's some additional reports coming forward later in this agenda as it relates to road one eleven and the parking concerns there as well as a speed reduction. So there's lots of consideration for council to make as it relates to that section of the municipality, but from the noise complaint standpoint, I think we've exhausted initial efforts based on the resolution that passed from council and certainly if there's more information that we can provide, we're happy to do that, but the intent is to yet kind of complete the circle.
Okay, questions of the report? Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor, I guess. No, appreciate the the time spent on this. It's affecting a lot of people. So just to clarify, I know we call this a noise complaint, really a lot of it has to do with hours of operation and consistent. So what I'm reading here in the in the red is a response from the developer or the business owners. So we're okay with seven to seven and eight till one on Saturday. That's really the only comment I have, because those are the hours that are set.
From a staff perspective, yes, I guess is the shortest.
Okay, other questions? If not, we have a motion that Council of the Township of Perth East receive the report prepared by the Chief Administrative Officer dated September seventeen twenty twenty four entitled Ben Met Noise Complaint Response CIO dash two zero two four dash fifteen for information. Moved by Andrew, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks Mike. Now we're moving to the clerk's department and the first item, we have the engineer appointment of the McCloy Municipal Drain and Eric's going to do that. So Eric, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, tonight, the report is for the McCloy Municipal Drain for council to appoint an engineer. If council may remember, this petition is under section seventy eight of the Drainage Act. It's for another crossing on the G to G trail, which is owned by the province of Ontario. Staff are recommending that we appoint Streamline Engineering Inc. to prepare an engineer's report under section seventy eight. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the report? If not, we have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East receive the report prepared by the Development and Drainage Coordinator dated September seventeen twenty twenty four entitled Engineer Appointment McCloy Municipal Drain DDC dash two zero two four dash three three for information. And further, that council appoint Streamline Engineering Inc. to prepare an engineer's report under section seventy eight of the Drainage Act for the McCloy Municipal Drain Lot Two Concession Two, Mornington Ward, Township of Perth East. Moved by Jerry, second by Jeremy. All those in favor? Carried. Thanks Eric. Now we'll move to tile loan application. Ashley?
Thanks Mayor, it's this is a tile loan application for Brady Farms. There's nothing further to add to the report. Some council members may have noted in the application, the original request is for twenty six thousand one hundred dollars and after the work had been constructed, it came in at twenty thousand seven hundred dollars. So that's why the numbers are slightly different there. So the loan is for twenty thousand seven hundred dollars. Can you answer any questions if there's any?
Okay, questions of the report? Seeing none, and the motion is that Council of the Township of Perth East receive the report prepared by the Manager of Legislative Services slash Municipal Clerk dated September seventeen twenty twenty four entitled Tile Loan Application one oh two nine three one nine Ontario Limited care Brady Farms CLE dash two zero two four dash eighteen for information. And further, that council approved the application for tile drainage loan of twenty thousand seven hundred as to drain lands described as concession seven Westport Lot fourteen, Ellis Ward, owner of property roll number two eight zero dash zero zero seven dash one one five seven zero zero four six four one, road one twenty two. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. Thanks Ashley. We'll move to Finance, the twenty twenty four General Insurance and Risk Management Services. Paula, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, I guess. Before council tonight is the results of the General Insurance and Risk Management Services Program, RFP. The RFP was issued on June seventeenth and it closed August nineteenth. We received three submissions and the evaluation team consisting of the CIO, Manager of Parks Recreation and Community Services, and the Treasurer independently rated each submission received based on the categories noted within the RFP and report before council tonight. In our evaluations, the, there were two submissions that were rated very close to each other. So those top two submissions were welcomed to a virtual interview with the evaluation team. And as a result of the interview, the evaluation team awarded up to ten additional points to the proponent. The evaluation team is recommending the RFP be awarded to Intact Public Entities for the General Insurance and Risk Management Services Program. And that's in the amount of two hundred and eighty four thousand six hundred and fifty one dollars. This represents a forty eight thousand five hundred and eleven decrease in the premium from twenty twenty four's insurance. And that's a fourteen point six percent premium decrease, or it equates to a half percent of a levy decrease. The evaluation team felt that the, it feels that the Intact Entities is the best program for the township. The stated premium includes many value added services, which include asset valuation and risk inspections, various educational training sessions, contract reviews, and then there's various risk analysis and assessments provided. And this will all assist in managing the premiums going forward for our insurance program. Intact Public Entities also is offering a local broker as a single contact for all of our insurance needs. The volunteer firefighters' insurance coverage was written in the RFP as an optional item for the RFP for consideration. And it's being recommended at this time to remain with Aon Reed Stenhouse Inc. This coverage has always been satisfactory to the township. And based on the submissions for the optional item, Aon provides the best coverage at the most economical cost. So that concludes my report. And if there's any further questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, question, Amanda?
Yeah, apologies. I just, can you provide some insight into, because like this is an RFP and you mentioned there's like, there was an interview process and then one candidate got ten points. So was this like a policy that we have existing? Like, how does that, how did that process happen? Because like it's, I just don't really remember ever a time where we interviewed RFP folks. So I don't know if any insight you can have, just out of curiosity, I'm not discounting what the recommendation, I just, just for understanding.
Yeah, through you, Mayor, I guess. Thank you for the question. There, the RFP was actually written as that was an optional, if required, the presentation interview. Sometimes with an RFP, you will get some proponents that come in and they're assessed fairly close. And to be fair, we felt it was necessary to provide that interview. Just to meet the team, ask a couple of questions, we asked both proponents there what the claims process would look like, how it would be start to finish, as well as the renewal process, what would all be involved with that and the timing. And each interview was assessed by the evaluation team and they could earn up to an extra ten points.
Okay, other questions? Bob?
Not a question, just my thanks to staff for doing the due diligence on this. I think it is important to do it every few years. And of course, you've heard me whine and complain about it through a couple of budget processes. So it is good to go to the market and compare. And so my only concern is what typically happens with insurance companies is once they get their business, then they jack your rates up in a couple of years. And that's historical from way back and it's evident in the report as well. So it is important to keep them honest. So thanks for that.
Okay, other questions or comments? If not, we have a motion that Council of the Township of Perth East receive the report prepared by the Manager of Financial Services slash Treasurer dated September seventeen twenty twenty four entitled twenty twenty four General Insurance and Risk Management Services Program, RFP dash FIN dash two zero two four dash zero one. Results, FIN dash two zero two four dash seventeen for information. And that Intact Public Entities be awarded a contract for General Insurance and Risk Management Services for the Township of Perth East in the amount of two hundred and eighty four thousand six hundred and fifty one for the twenty twenty five fiscal period with the option to renew for subsequent years based on the same terms and conditions for up to five years, additional periods of up to one year each. The township reserves a right to not appoint additional periods if dissatisfied in any way with performance, the fee charged for any other elements of the service provided, and that the volunteer accident, oh, excuse me, volunteer firefighters' accident VFIS coverage be renewed with Aon Reed Stenhouse Inc. Need a mover and a seconder? Moved by Bob, second by Hugh. All those in favor? Carried. Thanks Paula. Now we're going to move to Public Works and first up is road one eleven speed reduction request. Jake?
Thanks Mayor, it's the first of two reports relating to one eleven tonight is around the speed reduction request. As council's likely aware, the MTO has undergone a study for the intersection of line thirty four or seven eight and, and road one eleven. They've involved staff, particular Bill here and myself, and some of the conversations leading to this point. I think at this point, it's not public knowledge, but they've, their direction looks to be going to a street light, a stoplight with with turn lanes. You'll notice a part of the memo I wasn't able to include, as I don't want some of that getting out just yet. But around the safety concerns of the stoplight, I think their concerns come around with the eighty eighty kilometer hour maximum that's established there now. If you have a, a green or a yellow light, folks may try to, to accelerate towards that and that can create some safety concerns. So the request is five hundred meters either side of line thirty four. And for those wondering, on the south side, it would take it to just south of the tracks, the five hundred meters there. So I think this also makes sense with some of the development that's there and, and future development. So I would suggest council, sorry, would, would follow suit in this request. If there are any questions, I'll try and answer those.
Okay, thanks Jake. Questions of the report? No, okay, we have a motion that Council of the Township of Perth East receive the report prepared by the Manager of Public Works dated September seventeen twenty twenty four entitled Road One Eleven Speed Reduction Request PUB dash two zero two four dash twenty for information. And further, that council authorize the implementation of a fifty kilometer an hour maximum posted speed on road one eleven from line thirty four to five hundred meters north and five hundred meters south of line thirty four. Excuse me. Mover and a seconder, moved by Jeremy, second by Hugh. All in favor? Carried. And then the next report is road, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, certainly, certainly. Through, through some of our conversations to be held here, imagining following this change or potential change, we can certainly bring that up.
Okay, then we'll move to the next one. Road one eleven, no parking requests. Jake?
Thanks again, Mayor. We don't have to move far for this one. So this one came as other business brought by Counselor McCalpine a couple of meetings ago around some concerns of residents in the area and drivers alike with concerns over sightlines for those parking kind of adjacent to Ben Met Steel in particular. There's a few options that council can consider to try and minimize some of these concerns. Hopefully, one of those, one of the reductions in risk is, is the fifty kilometer hour speed reduction to start. But further measures, we could look at implementing no parking. We could, we could look at the entire stretch from the railroad right to the highway, or really anything in between. But I've kind of looked at the particulars, some of the layouts of the residents along there. And option two would be a hundred and fifty meters from the tracks. And I felt it was obviously necessary to do both sides of the road. In this instance, if you do one, those will just move across. Now, around the enforcement issue, I'd like to quickly speak to that. Some of the folks that are parking there as is are likely not following our bylaw. Wes can probably speak better to that, but I think enforcement of those types of issues is very challenging, especially in this circumstance, where a lot of the folks that are parking here are very short in duration. So by the time a call comes in and we respond, if we happen to have somebody available, they're going to be long gone. So I think So I think signage and education would be the best approach for this one. And on top of no parking, I think no stopping for that very same reason would be necessary here. No parking is not going to stop somebody necessarily from a short term park to run into BenMet's or whatever else. So I would suggest we do both signs. But I'll leave it to council to decide the scope of the no parking area. If there are any questions, I'll try and answer.
Okay, thanks, Jake. Questions of the report? Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Aggitts. I was wondering, are the sides of the roads getting beat up there pretty good from some of the activity? Or I haven't seen it myself, but I know there's been some talk about it.
I haven't been down to look at that in particular. I know our guys did do some ditching in front of BenMet's, but they didn't take note of any issues with the edge of the road. So I can't really speak to that at this point.
Okay, other questions? Jeremy?
Somewhat related to what's happening here, but on the topic of enforcement of parking, like this is a, you know, it's a community-wide issue that we have with enforcement of these parking bylaws. Like you could walk downtown Milverton at any given time on a Saturday or Sunday, and someone's going to be parked at the edge of a corner of one of the downtown streets. And the sightlines are terrible with those roads, with those buildings already being close to the road. And people are parking there. Again, it's like five, 10 minutes, so you're never going to catch them. So I don't know what the solution is for this, but there's a lot of, you know, on the topic of insurance and all of those types of things. There's, we have a lot of exposure to an accident happening at these intersections where people are parking illegally. And I don't know how to enforce that. I don't have an answer, but, you know, big picture. I think we have to find a solution to that. Like we had those posts a couple of years ago on the corners that popped up in the middle of summer. They're not there anymore, but it's becoming a real issue in other areas of the municipality, too. I'm just speaking specifically to Milverton where I sat there on Saturday and saw three cars park right on a corner when traffic's trying to enter onto Main Street and you can't see a thing. So I don't know if there's an answer municipally to kind of police that a little bit better, but just something to bring up.
Okay, other comments? Wes, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd just like to, the comment I'd like to add is that adding signage, like Jake is adding here, does help us enforce the parking and traffic bylaw. And, you know, situations like you're describing on Main Street and that sort of thing, the signage does help us because our process through ticketing is that we like to have that sign in the picture because it does indicate the violation there. So I just thought I'd add that because I see there are some options here. And I think Jake is doing a great job with the authority he has in the parking and traffic bylaw because he's the authority to have the signs put up and wear the boots on the ground to slap the tickets on the vehicles there. So I just wanted to add that the signs are beneficial for the bylaw department to do our thing. We talked about delegating you there, Jeremy, and I think that's a great idea. Like I would definitely vote in favor of that.
Okay, other questions or comments? Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Aggitts. So I know with other bylaws, I know just to rely on staff, like off hours and weekends and that. I think OPP can also enforce our bylaws, if I'm not mistaken, or is that not correct?
That's correct, yeah. A provincial offenses officer is essentially the qualified person to put the tickets on the vehicles. And that would be a building inspector, fire prevention officer, and the fire chief or myself. So that would qualify you to fill out a ticket in the province.
Okay, other questions? Who wants to move what? Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Aggitts. I appreciate the comments and the work done on this. With the diagram, I'd like to move option one for the plain fact that some of the comments, and I should say this during discussion, about mailboxes being blocked and driveways being blocked are actually farther down. So I'm not sure how busy it was that day, but for that reason, I'm going to move option one, please.
Okay, and there are two parts to it. Move option one and then the dollar figure, is that?
1260 from?
From Public Works, is it?
Yes, please.
Okay, do we have a seconder? Hugh? Comments or questions? I have a couple of questions. Are we setting a precedent in our municipality by picking and choosing roads to do this? And are we going to have others come forward? Anyway, we have a motion that Council of the Township of Perth East receive the report prepared by the Manager of Public Works dated September 17, 2024, entitled Road 111 No Parking Request, PUB-2024-21 for information. And further, that council select option one and authorize staff to implement the associated no parking section on Road 111. And further, that council approves the capital budget amendment for the transfer of $1,260 from the Public Works Capital Reserve to the Capitol Signs Budget for the procurement of no parking and no stopping signs on Road 111. Sorry, I'm having a bad night. Okay, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. Thanks, Jake. Okay, then we will move on. We have no reports from building and bylaw, nothing from parks recreation under fire. We have the Perth East Public Fire Department pickup. Bill?
Great, thanks, Mayor and council. The report tonight is in regard to the replacement of the 2014 pickup truck. This is an approved project in our 2024 budget. And tonight, due to the reuse of several components from the existing truck, I'm looking for council's approval to procure the replacement truck through a single source or direct negotiation. Section 8.1 of the township's procurement bylaw permits this and with council's approval when compatibility with an existing product is required. The savings to the municipality to reuse some of the items like the cap, pullout tray, and center console and lighting is between $12,000 and $15,000. And I'll gladly answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Questions of the report? No questions. We have a motion that Council of the Township of Perth East receive the report prepared by the Manager of Fire Services/Fire Chief dated September 17, 2024, entitled PEFD Pickup Replacement Manager Negotiation, FIR-2024-13 for information. And further, that council authorize the Manager of Fire Services/Fire Chief to procure this asset through single source and/or direct negotiation in accordance with bylaw 60-2016 being the Perth East procurement policy from All Roads Dodge St. Mary's, Ontario. Moved by Hugh, second by Bob. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, thanks. We're going to move to correspondence. We have one item of correspondence from Ed McGugan, Chair of the Maitland Valley Conservation, requests for input on their MVCA draft watershed strategy. Does anybody have anything they wish to put forward? Amanda?
Is this something that normally like our staff would ever provide input on? But I guess we don't really have specialists that can like weigh in on this type of thing. I guess the thing that I struggled with is like, I hate not, if they are asking us for input, for us not to provide input, but it's such a highly specialist thing. It makes it hard to weigh into it in a, in the right way, if that makes sense.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Council brought it. I think in this instance, with each of the conservation authorities, to your point, we have appointed representatives there, at each of them representing Perth East interests. And so typically, staff don't get overly involved in consultation process in that, yeah, the conservation authorities have their own staff that have expertise in those fields. In this instance, each of the conservation authorities is required through the amendments that have happened to have the watershed strategies, which I think is, it's a good idea. And it's certainly, the General Manager, Phil Beard, offered that if council wants to actually see the draft version or the completed version or just a highlight, he's certainly willing to come and present with our representative there. But, yeah, I don't think there's a lot, in particular with Maitland, to be, since it's more rural-based, there isn't a lot of significant implications, but we do interact with them. They were quite active as it related to the Percon and are quite active with the Percon development. But for the most part, we rely on their expertise.
I mean, I, for myself, like would love to see a presentation in the future from them. Like I think it's great that they actually engage with us and I think want to work with us, you know, compared to maybe some other CAs that are in our watershed. Not naming any names, but, but yeah, I think it's great that they have at least extended the olive branch. And it doesn't hurt to get that kind of information. I just, I wouldn't even know what kind of input that I could provide as a counselor, but it's good, good information to know.
Okay, we can just receive it for information. Then the Council of the Township of Perth East receive the correspondence from Ed McGugan, Chair of Maitland Valley Conservation Area, requests for input on MVCA's draft watershed strategy for information. Okay, moved by Jeremy, second by Amanda. All in favor? Carried. Okay, council and committee reports. There's no mayor's meeting log. Is there any council members who have a report on any of the boards or committees? Hugh?
Not necessarily a board or committee, but I had a great job on Saturday taking greetings to Milverton's Fall Expo. And Ansley LeBlanc was the senior ambassador and Izzy Lee was the junior ambassador. And it was quite a good afternoon and there was a very good crowd. So I think everybody had a good time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for going in my place. Anyone else have any committees or boards they sit on?
Councilor Smith, not to put you on the spot, but the OPP detachment board did have their first meeting, correct?
Yes, that is correct. Basically, it was kind of a get to know everyone around the table. Didn't really pass much because we're still waiting for that insurance component to come through. There's nothing really we can really do officially or unofficially. So, yeah, it was a good start. We have them scheduled. We're looking at maybe perhaps once a month, but if they're needed. It's kind of like the next one's in October, but after that, we'll figure out going forward how many times we're going to meet. Sounds like once a month, but, yeah, a good group. Looking forward to reporting back each time we meet.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything? If not, we'll receive the verbal update from Councilor Smith and Councilor McCalpine. I don't know what I'm saying anymore. Deputy Mayor. I need to go home. Okay, we need a mover and a seconder, moved by Jeremy, second by Bob. All in favor? Carried. Okay, we are down to bylaws. We have four bylaws with first and second reading. We have bylaw 51, 2024, a bylaw to exempt heartlock control on Lot 87, Plan 331, and that was the Dixie Development tonight of 8.1.1. The second one, bylaw 109, 2024, a provisional bylaw to provide for drainage work in one of the East Black Creek municipal drain in Alice Ward, and that was 6.2.1. The third one, bylaw 214, 2024, a bylaw to amend bylaw 30, 1999, and that was Lotto 301, Plan 363, Milverton Ward Township of Perth East. And that was for Main Street South, and that was Anna and Marshall Smith. That was 7.1.2 tonight. And the fourth one is bylaw 2024-02, a bylaw for a tiled adventure. And that was for Brady Farms, and that was 8.3.2. So I need someone to move first and second readings, moved by Jerry, second by Amanda. All in favor? Carried. And then third and final readings, we have three. And it's 51, 2024, a bylaw to exempt heartlock control. And that was 8.1.1 tonight. The second one is bylaw 214, 2024, a bylaw to amend bylaw 30, 1999. And that was for the property here in Milverton for Anna and Marshall Smith. That was 7.1.2. And the third one is 2024, a bylaw for tiled adventures, and that was Brady Farms, 8.3.2. So I need a mover and a seconder for third and final reading, moved by Amanda, second by Bob. All in favor? Carried. Okay, does anyone have notice of motion? Other business? I have one item of other business, and I guess I asked this to come forward because when I was at EMO and I went to have my couple of meals that I ate out, our per diems don't cover that anymore. So I thought maybe it was time. The 20 bucks didn't cover one meal for one person, so I thought maybe it's time that we look at updating. And so when I got reading this, there's all, so a few other things that I'd like staff to have a look at, too, and see what council says about that. So the meals right now, we're allowed $20 per meal. So I was wondering about what people thought of moving that to 25, possibly even 30? Hugh?
There's a lot of times you might not have one meal, but then you'll have a bigger meal. And then whatever you allow for that meal may not be enough. So if you allow a certain amount for the entire day, and then you can, if you get a cheap meal and then you've got an expensive meal, it's still covered, but you're still not throwing those of your own. Just a thought.
Yep, okay. Well, and then to go along with that, I think at the county, we are required to have receipts. And I think it would be prudent that we have receipts for our meals as well. Anybody have any? Amanda?
Yeah, I think it would be good for staff to bring back a report with some options to council. I think there's also doing a scan of what other municipalities are currently doing and how they're handling it, too. I think the receipts keep us honest as well. So I think, I think that that makes a lot of sense. And I think just with inflation and the cost of things, it is even sometimes hard, like when you include taxes, like sometimes for like, you know, lunch, you can get something for $25, but, you know, for an evening meal, like it's a little bit, gets a little bit harder to do so. So, you know, the meal allowance thing is also, you know, a good idea. So I think there's a couple of different ways to go about it and giving some options to council for some thought, I think would be a good idea.
Andrew?
I think it's a great idea to redo this one. So what I would like to see, and my suggestion would be for this, is maybe a little increase in the meals. But running total available from Treasury or whoever does it, just so you know where you are. I'm looking at going to the fabulous municipal day, but I don't know how much room I got left, so I'm just guessing. I don't want to go over, so.
Well, it's very inexpensive to come to municipal day, Andrew.
It's very fun, I know that. But so I wonder if that's a possibility, if we can have this, that there'll be something in our, in our policy that there's a running total going that we can easily access. I'm not sure what the best way to do that is, whether it's a phone call or some type of, you know, update, just, just an easy way to know where we're at for the year for the amount.
Okay, Jerry?
Sure, I'll take a kick at it, the per day, as Deputy Mayor mentioned.
Sure, I'll take a kick at it, the per day is Deputy Mayor mentioned, seems like a better way to go, and perhaps it'd be $100 per day with receipts. A lot of the conferences you go to, your lunch is included, so you wouldn't be spending on your lunch, the receipts would prove that, not that, but it would be proof that perhaps you did only spend 60 a day, but maybe capital 100, just a thought, whatever staff comes up with. The, the, when I first come on board, I understood that we were allowed two conferences per year as a, as a council member, but reading this further, you can go to as many as you want, it's just the, the limit is there, and, and I've often went over my limit, and I'm more than happy to pay that in my own pocket, I have no problem with that. But just clarifying that you can, we can go to as many as we want, that, that 3,500 is the limit. I know we did have a, there was something a couple of months ago, I'm not sure Mike, that you mentioned it about when we look at our budget to maybe even increase that. I know the, the registrations have increased, your hotel rooms have increased. Again, I'm happy with paying out of my own pocket, anything over and above I go, because I do have some holidays, I do like to attend these, so I'm not sure if we want to look at increasing that a little bit as well. My second or third thing, just curious of the reasoning, I'm trying to wrap it around my head, why if you're on county council, it's less, if you're not in county council, a bit more, I'm just, I'm not sure whether there's an explanation tonight on that, or if that could come forward with the report, but that's just some of my comments.
I, I can try to address, my understanding, Counselor Smith, around the 35 and the 3,000 is that the thinking was that as a county counselor, you have access to additional remuneration as a county counselor, and so that that's, that's the reason for the lesser amount. I do believe during budget visioning, sorry, just to continue on with your initial comment, there was a resolution or at least direction to staff to give consideration to those 35 and 3,000 amounts, so, but yeah, I think if, if that's the direction that the majority of councils comfortable with, with staff coming up with a draft report with some options, where we can certainly do that. Jurisdiction scan is certainly something that we deal with these when we're looking to update, and I, I do think it is, it's a little, it is a little dated, and yeah, the numbers suggest that, but there are certain procedures within it that are a little dated too, that I think are probably what's interesting. So if that's, if we have, I, I don't want to overstep, I know Mayor Aggins maybe had some other comments, but I do think it would be timely to review with that budget visioning piece that was already kind of brought forward too.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate that, that, no, I understand the reasoning for the third question, my third question, thank you.
Okay, Hugh?
It's, it's really too bad that Roma and Good Williams isn't together anymore. That's what makes it so hard to go to conferences, now you've got two separate conferences and basically almost have like double the expense, so it doesn't take much to, if you do that, plus you go to Ama and Ottawa, you, there's no way you can do all three, if you're just a council, you're not on county council.
Okay, Bob?
In the agenda, I wasn't entirely sure what this was getting into when it said council remuneration. I'm fine to explore the increased costs the conferences are in mileage and meals, you may as well also include, not in this policy, but the staff costs for conferences, I'm sure have expanded as well, so if you're going to do this one, you may as well look at how far behind we are with the staff as well, because I'm sure the exact same situation applies to all the conferences they're attending that have increased in cost.
Okay, anyone else? Jeremy?
Here, I think needs to be reviewed, 207 bucks.
Okay, we'll soon have it all being reviewed.
Okay, I do have a couple more things. In regards to meals, that when I went to Ama, there was breakfast Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and there was also lunch Monday and Tuesday, and so I feel if you're at the conference or owing paying for it, you shouldn't be charging for other meals, eating somewhere else when those meals are provided, and I think so the language in our, here maybe needs to be tightened up a little bit, that if, that if the meals are provided, then you should be eating at that place, not charging the township someplace else to have your, have those meals. I know they're not all provided, but they were at this conference that I was at, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, there was breakfast every day, and Monday and Tuesday, there was lunch both days. So I think that's something that we need to look into as well. Also, I, I just want clarification, it says we're a companion of companies, a member, their expenses will be paid as part of the allocation outlined in, in A, so they're only paid, they're not, they don't get meals and that, right? They just get to go and stay in your hotel room? Does that, is, or does that need to be more specified too?
I think it needs to be clarified too, I think it's a, it's a little gray in terms of, I think the intent is that the, the 3,500 is to cover those costs as well, but it doesn't speak to meals as it relates to the spouse. In my experience, the costs associated with the spouse's meals would not be reimbursed, but that's just my own experience, we could certainly do more of a broad review and see what that looks like and give councils some options to consider.
Okay, and then the last thing I have is, at the county, when everybody hands their expenses in, the warden is the one who okays all the expenses as well as one of the staff members, and I think that's maybe something that we should be looking at here too, that it would be the mayor and either the clerk or the CIO that go through the expenses and make sure the odd time, the things that we pick up at the county is somebody's, and as Andrew said, you don't know how much you have for a conference, they've hit their max, not realizing it, or someone's put in for twice, or someone inadvertently put in that they got mileage, but really they were on Zoom, and it's just little things like that. So that's how, we've done that for, I bet 10 or more years, that the warden has been the one at the county that, that authorizes the expenses for the, for the members. So I would ask that that be looked at as well, and that's pretty much all I have, I don't know if anyone else has anything else that they want to add, we'll let staff go back and work with all that.
Okay, so Council of the Township of Perth East received the new business from Mayor Rhonda Aggits, council remuneration for information, and it furthered that council refer to staff for a follow-up report. Moved by Jerry, second by Hugh, all in favor? Carried. Okay, do we have any announcements? Amanda?
Just a little bit of an update on the Ellis Optimus barbecue that took place last Thursday, there was between 600 and 700 meals sold. I know that there was a few staff that also came, so thank you Paula and Mike who helped support the great cause. I was joined by the mayor and also John Nader and his daughter, and it was a really fun, fun night and a really great meal, so just thank you very much for everyone who came up to support.
Okay, thank you, anyone else have anything? If not, we, no, we're going into close, we have a motion to come at the close. And that is at, you got time, 9:31. Regular meeting of Council of the Township of Perth East be temporarily adjourned at 9:31 PM to permit the holding of a meeting in closed session for the purpose of personnel matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, and it's an HR matter. Moved by Hugh, second by Jeremy, all in favor? Carried.
Okay. So we have a motion that you counsel the township of Perth East rise from closed session and reconvene to regular session at 10:05 p.m. Moved by Hugh, second by Bob, all in favor. Carry. That a motion that a closed meeting was held and only closed session items identified were discussed in closed session. Moved by Hugh, second by Amanda, all in favor. Carry. We have a motion that council support the creation of a permanent part-time fire training officer position as for the job description provided. Moved by Amanda, second by Jeremy, all in favor. Carry. We have a motion that council direct staff to implement the proposed updates to human resource policy five dash two, which is a discipline policy. Moved by Amanda, second by Jeremy, all in favor. Carry. We have a motion that council direct staff to add the new policy to the human resource manual as HR policy five dash thirteen whistleblower. Moved by Jerry, second by Amanda, all in favor. Carry. We have a motion that council endorse the following appointments for the remainder of the twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-six term for the Perth East Twinning Interest Committee, the P E T I C. Council members will be Jerry Smith and Amanda Broadhaken and community members, there's five, Patrick Minor, David Nowinski, Virginia Elrich, Doug Fife, and Evelyn Mueller. Moved by Jerry, second by Amanda, all in favor. Carry. That council, the township of Perth East approve the closed session minutes of the meeting on September four, two thousand and twenty-four. Moved by Hugh, second by Jeremy, all in favor. Carry. That bylaw fifty-two dash two zero two four, a bylaw to confirm the proceeding of the council of the township of Perth East at its regular meeting held on September seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four, we read a first, second, and third time. Moved by Bob, second by Amanda, all in favor. Carry. And the final motion of the night, that meeting of council be adjourned at ten oh seven p.m. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh, all in favor. Carry. Thanks everyone.